Underlined indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening. Whoa. Good evening, everybody. It's, um, I just want to start off by saying it's very nice to see everyone's smiling faces for a change, um, so I welcome that. Um, we'll have a call. You have anyone on the line for public participation?
No.
Is there anyone here for public participation? Come on down, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate Lane. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance. However, my comments tonight are mine alone and do not represent the Board or any other individual member. I would like to speak against your approval of Policy Number 1120, Public Participation at Board of Education Meeting as written, which will be considered under Old Business Item A1. The second paragraph of the policy describes the general conduct of the Public Participation Item of the Agenda. However, the last sentence of the paragraph states, quote, "Once the Board moves into regular agenda, the public may participate as allowed by the chairperson and with the following restrictions," unquote. The problem with this sentence is that once the meeting is called to order, you are already in regular agenda. Public participation is part of the regular agenda. It appears to me that this last sentence as written intends to describe rules for public participation that fall outside the Public Participation Agenda Item. Is this sentence actually meant to lead into rules that apply outside of the predefined Public Participation Agenda Item? If Items 1 through 8 are meant to apply to the Public Participation Agenda Item, then I have a number of concerns. One, change the last sentence of Paragraph 2 to be more clear. Two, Item 1, Restrictions of Comments Should Be Removed. Any person speaking during public participation should be able to address any subject not already prohibited by other policies. Furthermore, during public participation, there is no, quote, "specific agenda item being discussed", so this language does not make sense. Three, Item 2, Recognizing Board Members First should be changed to allow the public to be recognized first. Board members that want to speak as a member of the public and who would leave their seat to do so should go last. Four, Item 3, Time Limit on Comments should be removed as it is already stated in Paragraph 2. Five, Item 5, The Chairperson May Restrict Public Discussion, needs to be clarified that the Board may move to override the decision of the Chair as following Robert's rules. This is similar to Item Number 3 under your proposed interruption of meeting policy. Six, Item 8, Prohibit Comments, prohibit, quote, "comments which are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing", seems both very vague and overly broad. Lastly, I do think that the policy could have a section to address how members of the public or any other non-Board member would be recognized to speak during the course of a meeting. If this were the case, then Items 1 through 8 would likely be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, we will move on to the Report of the Chair. I have two quick things. I just wanted to mention that Joe, Ron, Dan, Paul, and I were at the Strategic Planning Committee on the 3rd. I spoke about our capital items, and Dan and Paul did a really good job
Great job.
with that, and the committee seemed to be pleased with our capital projects. And, um, I'll keep the Board up to date on that. Uh, the other issue for the Board is to let you know that, um, the Superintendent and I will probably put an executive session on our next regular meeting agenda for his evaluation, and, uh, talk about that more a little later. But, uh, the Board did receive a letter from the Superintendent asking for, um, the contract extension, which is part of his contract. So we will need to do the, uh, performance evaluation, and then, um, in executive session, then come out and vote on that. So, just want to give the Board that update. Moving along to the Consent Agenda. Uh, Approval of Minutes Warrant. Are there any questions on those two things? Okay, and Joe, you want to talk about an appointment?
Yes, I'd just like to, uh, just mention, uh, we hired Judy McArdle, um, as a, for a special education position at Jackie Hollow. Uh, this is part of a lot of the work that Darlene and Jen have been doing to try to keep kids in district and, um, starting a program. This is through grant funds right now. As a therapeutic day program at the middle school to keep kids in-house, in-program, and we know we can service them better.
Good. Good. Any questions for the Superintendent on that? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as in our packets? Dennis, seconded by Justin. Thank you. Any objections? Hearing no objections, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, reports of the committees? We'll start with our student representatives. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board of Ed. I hope everyone is having a marvelous Monday. Um, recently, the mask mandate has been lifted, and students have been able to choose whether or not to wear them. It is a personal choice, and our school community has been very adaptive and supportive with these new changes. The Andrew McDonough B-Positive Foundation had a successful fundraiser at the Boys Swim SWCs event and sold bracelets making over a hundred dollars for childhood cancer awareness. And many scholarship deadlines are coming up this spring, so seniors should regularly check their emails for upcoming scholarship opportunities and deadlines.
Some of the last remaining winter sports are doing very well right now. Robotics' regionals this past weekend ended with many teams qualifying for the World Championships, which will take place in Dallas. Hockey is currently in overtime against Enville tonight with the score 5-5 in their first round of states. Fingers crossed the boys pull through. Boys Swimming had SWCs on Friday and states this Friday. Both Dance and Cheer have ended with bittersweet endings at states, but now it's time to look forward to all of the spring sports starting up. It's the exciting time where teams are getting picked and players are getting ready to show more Masek pride. Continuing for sports, the Masek Color Guard has been doing well in their competitions in the past few weeks, placing second in their division at their last competition at Trumbull High School last Saturday. The Spring Musical Into the Woods will be performed on Saturday, March 26th, and Sunday, March 27th. The Prom Fashion Show will take place on Wednesday, March 16th. Hope to see many attend this fun event that funds the post-prom. And finally, SAT School Day is on Wednesday, March 23rd. Juniors will be taking the SAT digitally, and sophomores and freshmen will be taking the PSAT on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from Board members? Nick?
Um, the CES Representative Council met last Thursday. Um, unfortunately, at the beginning of the meeting, we were Zoom bombed, but we were able to kick them out, uh, very quickly. Um, so that was not a great start, but a lot was done. Um, we approved the non-union and union salary increases to be included in the CES budget. That will come out in May. I've given the Chair a copy of the increases per job category, as well as some comparative data that CES used to make these determinations. So, if any Board member would like to inspect, the Board Chair has that. Um, we also had a first read on a new diversity, equity, inclusion policy and regulation for CES. Um, Chip, uh, the Executive Director, also offered to all Board members present that he would be available to come to a Board meeting if we would like to do any PD with him to learn more about CES and CRECs, so I would offer that to the Chair as well. Um, and the last thing from the meeting, which was very interesting, um, is something at the end of his, um, excuse me, the Executive Director's report. I just want to read two sentences to you. Um, CES is working with our RESC partners in the Connecticut Center for School Safety to establish regional offices across the state to provide professional development regarding school safety planning, provide informal and formal crisis support, and provide consultation and onsite support for acute crisis events. So, the Connecticut Center for School Safety is out of Westcon, which I did not know that that even existed until that meeting. Um, and CES and Ed Advance, um, so Ed Advance is the CREC for Litchfield County, the northern, northwestern part of the state, um, have entered into a contract to hire someone whose office is going to be at the Workspace Collaborative, which is, um, it's really cool. It's like this big barn building in Bethel that, um, is a CES and Ed Advance joint venture. And both CRECs will have a full-time person whose only job is going to be developing professional development for teachers and staff to help with students in mental health crises. And they're also looking to hire two more of those people, one for the two middle CRECs and then one for the eastern, the two eastern ones. Um, so something that we should definitely be taking advantage of. They just signed off on all of this, I think it was the day before our meeting, so it's in process. But, um, the Connecticut Center for School Safety out of Westcon is doing some really good work on this that we've talked about recently. And, um, as far as Workplace Connecticut goes, you can take a 3D tour of the whole building on their website. It's very, very cool. So, um, and I will also be, um, March 16th at 9:30, uh, is Wednesday morning at 9:30. I will be touring some of the CES facilities with a Board member from Litchfield and from Wilton. So if you'd like to join, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports from committees, from anyone? No? Okay, Report of the Superintendent?
Thank you. I just want to start, March is Board Member Appreciation Month, so in addition to your bonuses this month, you will, uh, a little, uh, little treatment for, for everybody, just to thank you for all the time and devotion that you give to, you know, myself, the schools, the students, and the families of this town. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Got it. Uh, there is one piece not in the Consent Agenda, but I wanted to mention it, and that was, you know, while not a separation of employment, excuse me, I want to acknowledge, acknowledge John DiGennaro, who will be stepping down as Athletic Director from, uh, at Masek at the end of the school year and assuming a business position that will be open due to retirement. John has been the Athletic Director at Masek for 17 years. I believe he's the longest-tenured Athletic Director in the Southwest Conference. The position is incredibly time-consuming, uh, with responsibilities and hours that start well before the school year begins and seeps into every break during this, uh, this school year. So I want to thank John for his years of service and wish him well as he re-enters the classroom and gets to work with kids more closely once again. Years ago, uh, John and I started at the same time. Years ago, uh, John taught business classes at Masek, and one of the most popular electives at the time was business law, John's business law classes. And I imagine we're going to see a soar in interest once again of the business law classes. So, once again, I just want to wish John the best, um, moving forward. And the next piece, I just want to give everybody a quick enrollment update, just to kind of see where we are and what our incoming numbers look like. I know the, the big question then, you know, is it a blip or is it a trend? So, hopefully this sheds a little bit of light on that. So, what I have here is just, uh, this is just this year. These are our October 1. Remember, there's only two times that enrollment numbers are captured by the state, October 1st and then the last day of school. So these are our October 1st numbers, and then with the help of Lisa Shishkin, these are our, our current numbers at our schools. Very interesting, you know, last year, we've seen, we saw this huge influx of students at Font Hollow. And not to say that Font Hollow has gotten any smaller, it hasn't. But the, the, uh, majority of students, uh, that have moved into town during the school year seem to have fallen into Monroe Elementary, and more so Stepney, because the Monroe Elementary also captures our pre-K enrollment, which is, as kids age from 2 to 3, they'll go, they'll go into pre-K. So, if you notice, we have, you know, 11 more students at Monroe Elementary than we had at the beginning of the year. Um, I'll come back to the right and explain that in a second. Uh, two, only two additional students at Font Hollow, which is our, our biggest school. And then Stepney, which is, like I said, we, we saw the most, 17, about anywhere between 1 to 5, um, new students per grade if you look at it, like 4 in kindergarten, 3 in, uh, 3 in first grade, um, 5 here in, uh, 3rd grade. So just, you know, just again, just keeping an eye on that. Uh, not very much movement at the, the two buildings where we can handle it the easiest, and that's the middle school and the high school. Uh, Jackie Hollow has, you know, a net gain of 6 from October 1st to now, and Masek also a net gain of 6. The big number that I know everybody is worried about, and just to give you an idea of where we are, as of Friday, we have 36 kids enrolled in kindergarten at Monroe Elementary. Just to put it into perspective, last year at this time, we had 42, we had 42 students enrolled. Uh, we opened up enrollment a little bit sooner this year, uh, but we know we're not done yet. We're going to, well, obviously, you know, that number will increase, but just to give you some frame of reference. The big change here, though, is our enrollment in, in Font Hollow right now. We have 71 students enrolled as of Friday, whereas a year ago, and again, we had that huge bump up this year with the 125, we had 101 registered at this time a year ago. And Stepney, kind of like Monroe, is right about where it was last year. Uh, 55 currently, uh, enrolled, uh, registered, 57 a year ago. Any questions on any of those?
What's your, what's your big takeaway from that, Joe?
So far, you know, the one that, the one that jumps out at me the most is the, uh, is the, uh, the Font Hollow numbers, and we'll, we'll continue to keep an eye on that. Um, you know, that's, that's an area that, you know, we saw a huge increase last year. The other big takeaway is trying to keep an eye on, on these Stepney numbers. We got a sec, a section of 3 here in first grade, a section of 3 here, uh, our current first grade and our current 4th grade, which will be 5th, you know, 2nd and 5th next year. But just keep an eye on those numbers, because, you know, with 3 sections, a few students added in, could bump those numbers up, uh, pretty quickly.
Joe, what's our total?
Total, students, about 3,400, 3,400, 40, I think, or 3,400, 3,900. Sorry, just the total. Yeah, this has 3,375, but these are students in, sitting in our seats right now. Doesn't include students that, you know, would be, that we're responsible for at CES. Yeah, I don't play students. Any other questions? I think next is the Special Ed Report. Darlene?
Hey, everyone. So there hasn't been a lot of, uh, movement in Special Education Month this month, which is good. Um, since my last report, 3 students enrolled in the district with IEDs. 1 student was withdrawn, and 4 students were dismissed from services. Brings us to a total of 5 that were taken out of special education, but 5 were made eligible in the meantime for services, which brings our enrollment this month to 517 students who receive, who receive special education services. Um, Joe's talking about enrollment, and, um, this leaves us the 517 as compared to what, um, the number of students that we have in districts leaves us at about 15% of our total population. Now, the numbers just came out, um, recently for K to 12. The state average is 16.3%, but that's K through 12. So we did the numbers, and actually Sheila did. Um, if we take out our preschoolers, our percentage is 14.2. So we're, we're below the, um, state average again, which is, which is good. On the enrollment sheet, um, Diane actually brought it to my attention, there is a typo. Um, there is in the column for, um, uh, high-cost student, it says 1, but there aren't. So, um, she, she says 1, but there's no, it says 0 at the total, so it is 0. So, um, that moved into district this one. Um, on March 1st, we, um, updated our access cost. Um, due to the number of students that we're bringing back to district, we, um, our reimbursement for, uh, predicting that our reimbursement is going to be about $400,000. We, in our budget, it's, um, we had predicted $500,000. Um, but in transportation and tuition savings, cost savings, we're going to be okay there. That's going to offset it, so. Um, a few changes this month in our financial statement, just very few. On page 1, in outside agencies, there was a negative $112,000 last month. Now it's a negative $101,000. That's because we were able to close some POs of those students that we brought back into district in the longer regard of services. On page 2, the independent evaluation lines, it's about, I think, it's a little way down the page, I think. Um, that has been decreased again for the number of evaluations that we've been doing this year. Um, this, this is a line that I am predicting will run over. Um, despite our new self-grants, we, we had put in some grant money too for outside evaluations. Um, but I, I still think that we're going to run over. We, we have very little left in the grant money and very little left in this line. So, you know, we still have some evaluations that are out there that we haven't paid for yet. But all in all, when we, when we consider the bottom line, we're still trending in the positive, so. Questions?
Anything for Darlene? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. Uh, moving along, I know Dave spoke about the evaluations coming up. I have the Board of Education evaluation. It's just a Google form. I'll send that out this week, and we can do that as all part of the, the process. Um, if you want, I'll send it to you ahead of time if you want to take a look at it and see.
No, you can, you can send, it's the same format as previous years.
Yeah.
I think, um, we can send that out. Um, we do it online.
Yeah.
And we get together and, and review it.
Yeah, I'll send that out tomorrow. And then the last thing, I just wanted to, uh, give everyone just a couple of quick updates. Dave already gave one of them, and that was last Thursday. Dave, Dan, Paul, Ron, and I were at the Town Council Strategic, um, Strategic Planning Committee, special meeting to go over the capital, um, work that was going to be done. Um, you hit it on the head. Uh, Paul and Dan did a great job explaining the rationale for the, the capital work that we were, we're going to have done. Uh, our next meeting with the Board of Finance, um, not, uh, just a regular Board of Finance meeting, is March 16th, and I know we're going to give some updates on special education, the same updates that we've had here, um, but just to go over some of the changes with, with them there. And then the big meeting really coming up is March 31st. Uh, March 31st is the special meeting with the Board of Finance and the Board of Education. It's the Board of Education's workshop with the, uh, with the Board of Finance. So I'll be presenting my executive summary, executive summary, uh, of the budget to the Board of Finance as this is the last group. This is kind of the last look before any final adjustments will be made before May 2nd, before, or May, May 2nd or May 3rd, whenever the referendum is. That was it.
Joe, one thing I wanted to ask you, um, as far as Board attendance on the hiring committees with the retirements that we've had, um, how do you want to handle that as far as who would like to volunteer for each committee? Obviously, we'd like at least one Board member on each
Absolutely.
on each committee, uh, as a Board rep, so we have, um, some big shoes to fill. So do you want to have Board members email you that?
That'd be great. That'd be great. I know Jerry talked before about Assistant Superintendent, so if you want to do it that way, um, I'm fine.
Jerry for Assistant Superintendent, um, I know, I'd like to be on.
I've got to get right to it. Jerry for Assistant Superintendent.
Jerry? Yeah.
I've got my own 92. I don't have my own 93, so.
Yeah, you can't up your pension, can you, Jerry?
That doesn't matter.
Um, I'm interested in that one as well. Um, I think Nick is too for that one.
Well, we don't need a lot. I mean, that's a lot of people. I can move to something else.
I know, um, Justin is interested in Athletic Director.
So am I.
And Christine.
Yeah.
Um.
I can go to the English one, a little outside my wheelhouse, but. Learning something new, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so let Joe know, because we have, uh.
When did I meet you?
We haven't, we haven't.
Uh, 3 of those 4 have been posted, right? I believe.
Yes, the only one, and I got to talk to, uh.
It's John's.
We're in the process of.
No, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Secondary Restructual Leader for PE.
Mike Crowley and I just spoke about it.
The English one together?
It's going to go up.
Okay. Yeah. Lot of, uh, lot of changes.
Maybe email that out to all of us, and then we can.
You got it.
what you have so far, and then we'll.
Is that the only one left without a rep, English?
But Nick just said he.
No, there's 4.
There's Special Eds.
Oh, Special Eds.
Darlene's position and, um, John DiGennaro's?
Yeah.
Well, Justin, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay.
It's special.
Did you want to do Special Ed too, Alan?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, we just did it.
Any questions for the Superintendent?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
Jerry?
What time is the meeting on, on the 31st, and do you expect us to have support or not?
Uh, it would be good if, if the folks can come if they have any questions. That'd be, that would be good to have some extra support. Uh, I'm not sure yet. Ron, do you know? Is it 6 o'clock?
I think it's. 6 or 6:30.
I'm going to check on the town website right now.
That's okay. I didn't mean to hold you up.
That's all right.
I believe it's 6.
6, not 7?
No, it's, it's always nice if people can attend. Um, I'm going.
It's a town hall, right?
But, yeah, town hall.
It's also, they're hybrid, right?
No, they're in personnel.
They have been doing.
I think so.
Yeah, you can also join hybrid, a hybrid way too.
6:30?
6:30.
Thank you.
All right, it's on my calendar.
Okay, thank you. We have a presentation. Joe, you want to?
We do. I'm having to introduce Tom Hennick from the Freedom of Information Commission just to do some Board professional development with us all and talk about the Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you. I got, I got some deja vu going on here. I always confess when I do these sessions, I used to sit on Board of Education myself and chaired it for 5. First of all, no one ever gave me gifts. 10 years I sat there, not a single gift, and I hear you talking about budget and budget meetings and stuff. I get, I'm getting the shakes.
Flashbacks.
Yeah. So, thanks for the invitation. I, I always share that with people, because a lot of times they say, "Tom, you don't get it, you know, we're volunteers." We talked about the big bonuses that everybody's going to get. I do get it, because I, you know, raced home after work, gulped down some dinner, and then came to a meeting, so I, I get what it's like, and of course, all the fanfare you get in town, you go to, what, Bill's or Bella Rose's, and you get free food, right, because everybody loves each other. So I, I do get it. Uh, Freedom of Information is part of the package, though. You didn't necessarily sign up for it when you, you know, either got, you know, elected or appointed to a Board, but it's part of what, what we need to know how to do so that we can operate in a, in an open and transparent fashion. It's the, it's the law in the state of Connecticut. It's now 47 years old. It was Al Agasso's brainchild when she ran for governor for the first time. And if you do the math, 47 years ago puts us right smack in the middle of Watergate. So we had a country that was in turmoil because of a lot of things being done clandestinely, secretly, behind closed doors. And she brought this concept back to make sure that, that those of us who are in public agencies didn't operate behind closed doors. There's, there's a saying that James Madison had that talks about, you know, making sure that people get the most information. That's the only way that a democracy works. I'm paraphrasing, but that, he was more articulate than I am, but that's, that's the key. So, you know, kudos for doing what you can to make sure that you do your work in public. The law's about 2 basic things. It's about access to public meetings and access to public records. And when I do a, a full-blown workshop, it's not usually part of a meeting, so I'm going to hit some highlights, but if I don't touch on something, you know, let's keep this somewhat informal. Ask a question, you didn't touch on this, how about that? I'll try to answer it for you. And the other thing I'll tell you is, you know, I have a face, for better or for worse, to put with a voice on the other end of the phone. I spend most of my day at the Commission answering questions on the phone or answering emails, so if something comes up after I leave, never hesitate to pick up the phone and ask. I would rather help you through a problem, give you the tools to work with before it becomes a problem, uh, so that you don't find yourself in front of the Commission with somebody having filed a complaint because you've done something improperly. Definition of a meeting is important, especially when you're on the Board. Just, just sort of listen to the words. I don't read a lot of definitions, but listen to the words. Meeting means any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum of a multi-member public agency, and any communication via or to a quorum of a multi-member public agency, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment, to discuss or act upon a matter over which the public agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. Bottom line is, folks, when you gather to do your work, make sure that you're conscious of the fact that you need to do your work in public. Make sure the meeting's properly noticed, that it's open to the public, and that there are minutes of that meeting when the meeting is done. Proper notice means an agenda. Agenda needs to be available at least 24 hours in advance. Yours looks very complete. Looks like you know how to do that. Just make sure it's available so that the public is fairly apprised as to what's going to happen. You want specificity on your agendas. You want to make sure that people can look at it and say, "I, I don't need to go to that one tonight," or, "Gee, there's a hot item on there. I really want to attend." The, the law gives us 3 different kinds of meetings to work with. Your regular meeting, special meeting, emergency meeting. Since you're a regular meeting, you have a date, time, this is when we meet. Special meeting is a meeting, a lot of people see that word "special" and they say, "Gee, well, we can't do this." You can do anything you need to do at either one of those meetings, as long as it's properly noticed. Here's the difference. At a regular meeting, like tonight's, should something come up under Old Business, Chairman says, "Is there any other Old Business?" You make a motion, you second it. If 2/3 of you want to agree to do that, you can add it to the agenda. But if it's a special meeting, which means only that the meeting doesn't occur in your regular place, date, and time, you can't add anything to the agenda. So when you're preparing an agenda for a special meeting, an item like Old Business with nothing underneath it, now you've got things underneath here, but if this just said "Old Business," that was blank, you might as well take it off. said old business, that was blank, you might as well take it off. The key thing is to make sure, especially with a special agenda, that you've got agenda specificity, so that people can see what you're going to do. There's a third kind of meeting, which I always try to sort of dance around, because it's always dangerous to use it. There is an emergency meeting, if you've got a situation where you can't wait 24 hours to notice the meeting, the law says that you are allowed to do that. The problem, folks, is that what the law says is an emergency sets the bar really, really high. It doesn't want us to meet in an emergency fashion, because the emergency meeting is not noticed. And so, you know, I get calls sometimes where people say, oh gee, we've got a real emergency on our hands, I say, try to wait 24 hours. We forgot to put out an agenda, we forgot town hall was closed, we didn't bring the agenda in on time, things like that. Oops, I forgot, it's not an emergency. People say, give me an example, and it's, of course, you know, if you've ever dealt with legislators creating legislation, there's no specific example, it's not articulated in the law, but I can give you an example from my board days, I don't know any of you who are on board, I guess it was maybe one, eight or nine winters ago, it seemed like we got five feet of snow every 30 seconds, and we looked up one day, and one of the roofs was pretty heavily carried, and we couldn't wait 24 hours. We had to meet, we had to realot some money, and get somebody professional up there to get the snow off of it. That, that's an emergency. If you ever have a situation like that, you meet, you talk about only the emergency situation, and within 72 hours, you create minutes that reflect what the emergency was, who was there, and what you did about it. If you can avoid the emergency meeting, it's always a better way to go. Why didn't they tell us, what were they hiding, you know, all of those things transpire. You know, I know Monroe's a friendly town, everybody gets along, but there's politics at play everywhere, so. Again, your meetings are open to the public. Now, you made a comment, Mr. Chairman, that you're happy to see everybody's faces, is your first in-person?
Without masks.
Without masks, without masks.
That's why I made that comment.
Yeah. You know, a lot of people have been struggling with the in-person hybrid, when the pandemic hit in 2020, the governor issued an executive order that allowed us to at least continue to do our work by meeting virtually. Then last year, when the order expired, the legislature put in a provision that allows us to continue to do that, either totally, or virtually if we choose to, or in a hybrid fashion if we choose to. One of the good things that they did was they gave us a choice, we can do it any way we want to do it. Bad, one of the bad things they did was they said that this will expire at the end of April of this year. I don't, if you're aware of that. Now, they're working on different things that may make some of these things permanent, so when I tell you about, you know, electronic participation, right now is only good till the end of April, so, you know, keep an eye on the legislature. But a couple of the highlights of that, if you're going to have a virtual component to your meeting, you need to make sure that notice goes out at least 48 hours in advance to board members and the public that there's going to be an electronic component. And then you want to make sure that your agenda, when it comes out 24 hours in advance, has that link, whether you Zoom, or WebEx, or Teams, whatever you use, make sure that that link is there. The key is real-time access, that's what the law requires. If it's a regular meeting, and it's totally electronic, you also need to record it, I suspect you do some of that anyway, but it needs to be recorded, and the recording needs to be on your website in seven days, and it needs to be up there for at least 45 days. Again, that's, that's for a regular meeting only, but those are some of the highlights of that. You mentioned, you know, Zoom bombing, one of the things that I talked about, has that happened before, or is that the first time you had that happen to you?
It was the first time I have experienced it.
When, when this first happened, you know, the key is to make sure, again, real-time access, and when the pandemic first hit, I think some people were bored, were looking for something to do, and I got some calls from a couple of boards of education, interestingly enough, meaning nasty Zoom ones, like racial epithets, insults, and things that just, you As a board, whether in-person or virtually, yes, you have to provide access, but remember you have control. You have, you know, that comes up, just because the law says that you have to let people in, it doesn't mean you have to keep them in if they're disrupting your meeting, that's an important thing to remember, you have a right to control your meeting. You know, pre-pandemic, there's, there's still a provision that exists today that hasn't changed, I mean, if the crowd gets particularly unruly, you can have, you can clear the room ultimately, you can get, clear them out, or if that doesn't work, you can clear the room. The same thing applies if you're having a meeting with a, with a virtual component. Let me just share with you, Zoom bombs happened to me once, you'll get a kick out of this, I was doing a talk like this at home, in my home, and it was for a group of, we'll call them citizen activist types, like legal women voters type, and I'm talking along, and the screen goes black, and this loud sort of dance music starts up, and I'm thinking, uh-oh. And at the same time, I should say that my daughter is an international teacher who could not get to her country last year, so she's teaching her first graders behind me in the dining room downstairs, and I'm upstairs, so I think the music's coming from her. Then all of a sudden, she yells up the stairs, and she says, Dad, what's that noise? I said, uh-oh. And just as she says that, the strippers parade across the street, because I'm trying to talk about freedom of information. I can see the hands trying to turn them off like that, you know? Can't make it up, so I, I helped my cool, let me just say that they didn't leave a lot to the imagination, but they were able to turn, the bottom line is, they turned them off and got them out, which is, which is what you're able to do. So I hope yours was at least somewhat humorous, that, that's the only experience I've had, but it's startling when it happens, but you know, you, you have to keep your eye on the ball, make sure you get your work done. Hand in hand with that, I was interested, I didn't realize that you were going to have a discussion about public speaking tonight. Understand that how you handle that is entirely in your hands. There's nothing in the Freedom of Information Act that requires public participation or public speaking or public comment in a meeting. You know, there are different philosophies as to how it should be handled, but if somebody calls me up tomorrow morning and said, I was at such and such board meeting, and they wouldn't let me speak, I have to say, we have no jurisdiction over that. So understand that, you know, any policy you put in place, however you handle it, it's entirely up to you. Who speaks, when they speak, if they speak, how long they speak, and I bring that up when I talk about the virtual meeting, because a lot of people were somewhat hesitant to say, if it's virtual, how do I, how do I link in, how do I Zoom, how about if I send them something in writing? Again, how you handle it is, is your call. If you take something in in writing, you want to read it, you can, if you don't want to, again, you're not violating any FOI law if you don't. That doesn't mean that we discourage public comment, you know, most boards, 99% of the boards that I deal with, my own, the ones that I was on then that I'm on now, you encourage that, you want to hear from the people you represent, but you, you have a right to control, you have a right to keep it, you know, in the format that you want. Some people do it twice during a meeting, so. One of the things people ask, when people ask us questions, we, board members ask us questions, we have to answer them. No, you can if you want to, you know, if you want to interact, you can. Again, those are decisions you get to make, so FOI steps away when it comes to discussions about public speaking. We say make sure that you work in public, that you do as much as you can in public. One of the things I should have mentioned is, you know, people sometimes say, gee, we've got a really sensitive issue to go, you know, and, and again, as a former board event person, I get that there's sometimes things you don't want to talk about in public. But the law says that you have, well, gee, what if we sort of have sort of an informal gathering beforehand? Please don't do it, please don't do it. Well, what if we set up a little subcommittee? A subcommittee's not the full board, it's not a quorum, you said we need a quorum to have a full meet. Subcommittees are public agencies in the eyes of the law. I should, when you talk about what this law applies to, it's all public agencies in Connecticut. I won't reach into the definition of a public agency, it's pretty long, but there's a phrase that said, phrase that says, including any committee of or created by. I had a discussion with a guy today, just did not, well, what if we call them liaison groups? Or what if we, and try to find a way so that his subcommittee didn't, it's just, you know, I don't know how your board operates, when I was on the board event, we had subcommittees that did a lot of the legwork, finance committee, transportation committee, curriculum committee, and then, but those were public, the people could still come to those, just because it was a subset, if you will, of the board, it didn't mean that they weren't public agencies. So, so remember that going forward. And also remember that there are paths that the board or commission can take to exclude the public. You know, you mentioned executive session before, understand that there's five specific reasons for an executive session, you may or may not, you know, have that down yet, but there's a personnel executive session. If you are going to have that, remember that the person who's going to be discussed needs to be given that information in advance. They're going to talk about you in an executive session next week at the board meeting or two weeks, and if that person says, no, you're not, I want to talk about it in public, in a public setting, and insists on that, it doesn't happen very often, you can't go into executive session, you must have that discussion in public. Where people get hung up on that one, is they say, well, wait a minute, I don't want it in public, but, you know, if you're going to talk about me, I get to be in the room, I demand to be in the executive session with you. Uh-uh. Once the person waives that right to a public airing, if you will, whether or not he or she joins you in the executive session is up to you. You can invite anybody you want into an executive session to give evidence, to give testimony, to hear somebody's side of the story, but that's, again, that's something that's your call, that's where you have control. Board members are all entitled to be in, but anybody else beyond that is up to you. You can, you can invite people in, and if you bring people in to hear, you know, some information, be mindful of the fact that once you're done with them, if you will, they should leave. You don't want to, you don't want to have them sitting watching you deliberate in a situation where other people are outside, so bring them in as long as you want, have those conversations, but then make sure that they leave, once you, once deliberations of any kind start, you should, you should be there alone. In noticing an executive session for personnel matter and other things, remember that executive session personnel is not enough. The law says that you have to put more out there, executive session, discussion of the performance of a teacher, discussion of the performance of a, of a public works employee, discussion of the performance of a police officer. You don't necessarily have to name the individual, but you need to have more than just personnel matter when you do that. And, and I've seen some boards get, you know, have a problem with that down the road, because they don't want to name somebody now, you know, you mentioned the superintendent's evaluation, there's only one of them, so, you know, you, you don't have much choice there, but if you're looking to perhaps, you know, soften it, if it's a disciplinary situation, you can do that, so that you don't necessarily have to identify the person in public. Remember that you need a two-thirds vote of those of you who are present to go into an executive session, so even if the only item you have on a particular night is an executive session, one item, agenda, executive session, you still need to convene in public, you need to make the motion. Second, two-thirds of you vote to do it, then you go into executive session, and then, very important, you come out, you do not ever take action behind closed doors. Please make sure that you vote public, the minutes need to reflect precisely who voted for what or for whom, you always want to do that. Executive session for personnel, executive session for pending claims, pending litigation, there's a lawsuit, there's a grievance, there's a CHRO complaint, you want to talk about your strategy, you can do that behind closed doors. Executive session for a security matter, the only way to say this is, it's come up a lot since 2012, I think you all know what I'm talking about, a lot with school boards. We want to talk about resource officers, we want to talk about escape boards, we want to talk, and if you think about the logic there, talking about that in a public setting might be self-defeating, because the people you're trying to keep up could be listening to your discussion, so clearly you could have that discussion behind closed doors. An executive session for a land transaction, I mean, let's suppose at some point you've got an old school building that you're trying to sell or lease or something like that, you could have those discussions behind closed doors, because you wouldn't have to give away compromise or position by talking about it in public. The fifth reason is a little broader, it's an executive session to talk about a document or documents that you believe are exempt from disclosure. You put your bus contract out to bid, the bids come in, the RFPs, I don't know how you do it, but they all come in, you want to look at that, go for student, Durham Services, I don't know which ones you deal with, they come in, well, the doc, there's an exemption in the FOI Act for bids and RFPs until you've signed the contract, so you could go into executive session to look them over, talk about them, debate the different provisions in there, before you come out to vote, because the documents, the documents themselves are exempt from disclosure. The document executive session is a little broader than the others, because there's a lot of different documents that may or may not, on a board of education, you can have documents that may be covered, but for, you may have, you know, all of those kinds of things may come into play, and so just be mindful of that when you go into executive session. In addition to executive session, boards and commissions are going, it's a, it's a phrase that you may or may not have heard, called the non-meeting, it's, it's one that makes me want to bang my head against the wall, because it makes me crazy, but what the legislature did was said, okay, here's a bunch of things that everybody in the room's going to call a meeting, but for the purposes of freedom of information, it's not a meeting, which means all the discussion about notice and open goes by the boards. The big one for you folks, I suspect, is collective bargaining. When you're negotiating your, your union contracts, your collective bargaining contracts, you're negotiating sessions, your strategy sessions, they're not meetings, so the, the idea of noticing it, having it in the open, they're not meetings, you can do all that, you can, you know, you can go to another town, you can go to the casino, go to New York City, whatever you want, you don't have to do them in a public setting. Another one, you, you mentioned that you, you know, you've had some people retire or leave the district, executive level positions, you can form an executive level search committee that can operate outside of freedom of information, and you can do that, and again, not noticed, not open. One that I always like to make reference to when I talk to groups like yours, it says that you can have a chance meeting, or a social meeting, neither planned nor intended for the purpose of discussing matters relating to official business. So you have a particularly good meeting, and you want to go out for a drink afterwards, social gathering, what else are you going to talk about? Let's not be naive, those discussions take place all the time. Technically, I'm supposed to tell you, no, you can never talk about, look, be smart about it, understand that those conversations are going to happen, but try to keep them on a surface level, do not get into those deep deliberative conversations that you should be having here at the meeting. I guarantee you, the one time you all go out to dinner, and you're having, and somebody loses sight of where you're, where you are and what you're doing, you get into a passionate debate about a, a school issue, the wrong person's sitting in the next booth and files a complaint because you've had an illegal, illegal meeting. Do not dig deeper into court issues, you know, what did you think of what he said, what are we going to put on the next agenda, stuff like that is certainly fine, and we'd be, we'd be foolish if we thought that those conversations didn't happen statewide, just be smart about it. To that end, when I read you the definition of a meeting, you may have heard the words, whether in person or by means of electronic equipment. Electronic equipment was put into the, into the law back in 1975 for the powerful chairman who'd get on the phone and say, I need you to do this, you to do that, you vote here, mark my words, if you don't, you know, that sort of thing, and you come into a meeting, the house packed, all in favor, all in fa, what, what happened? What happened is the meeting, they held it on the phone before the meeting took place, and you can't do that, guys, you can't do that. And when we talk about electronic equipment in 2022, we're talking about a lot more than telephones, we're talking about email, and text, and Twitter, and Facebook, and all of those different things. I'm not telling you not to use them, that's the way we communicate today, especially in those times, in the last couple of years when we're shut-ins. But again, do not have your meetings via email. The chairman sends out something to everybody, says, look, guys, I want everybody to see this, I think it's a really good idea, I read this in a, in a cave journal or something like that, I want you all to see it. Well, that's fine, but when you write back to him and tell him that's the dumbest thing you've ever heard, and then you write back and say, no, I really agree with that, next thing you know, you're having a debate via email, you, you've got a problem on your hands, you're having a meeting via email that you shouldn't, you just shouldn't do that. Again, the deep deliberative conversations need to be here, you need to have those, those discussions here, not, you know, email, and people say, well, who's going to see the emails? The other thing you need to sort of walk away from here with is the idea, understanding that anytime you create a record that has to do with, you know, Monroe School District, Stool District business, it becomes by definition a public record. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's a record you'll have to give out. There's hundreds of different exemptions and exclusions in federal laws. But you have to start with the premise that it's, if you don't want to see it on the front page of what, News Times covers your town, maybe?
Connecticut Post.
Post, all right, the Post. I'm a law for my geography. But if you don't want to see it on the front page of the Post, don't send it. Because, and I'm going to read you an example that'll give you a chuckle, but make you shake your head. Everything becomes a public record. So you've got a double whammy there. Oh gee, look at these emails. Oh, look, they had a meeting via email. And oh, look, I've got their strategy on topic X that they really didn't want anybody else to know about. So understand that when you're conducting board business, the best thing to think about is to do it in public, to do it so that people can understand it. The last thing sort of formally before I give you just a touch about records is minutes. I suspect your minutes, based on the way you operate, your minutes are pretty good. But one piece of advice on minutes, they need not be the recreation of War and Peace. They are not meant to be a recapitulation of every word that everybody says. Especially, I remember this so clearly during budget time, when people get up and they want to give these passionate, you need to give more to this or cut that. And then they finish by saying, I want every word of that in the minutes, not required. The only technical requirement for minutes is a record of who votes for what or for whom. Now, you want more than that in there. You're creating the, you know, the historical record for your board. But how much more, again, is something that you have control over. People don't get to tell you what they do or don't want in the minutes. That's up to you. Just one, a second or two, again, mindful of the fact that you've got other work to do. I want to stress the issue about records. Hey, I was working at home during the pandemic, so those aren't public records, right? I was using my own laptop or my own phone. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. If you create something in the conduct of board business, it's a public record. Again, you then have to look at the different exemptions, and we don't have a lot of time. But, you know, I mentioned FERPA. I told, there's an exemption for bids. There's an exemption for personnel records. They have to meet standards. Doesn't mean that all personnel records get withheld. In fact, a lot of them get released. The standard for invasion of privacy, you know, is set from a Supreme Court case back in the 90s. But the fundamental thing to remember is that everything becomes a public record. Doesn't mean that somebody's going to come in and grab your laptop because you, you know, you wrote a letter or something on it. It means that if you were asked, you'd have to extract those emails or letters and produce them if they weren't exempt from disclosure. I'm going to finish with this little story to show you again. Think before you send. One of the law departments in one of our major cities during the height of the pandemic was looking for a senior legal secretary. The head of that law department sends an email to a colleague during the process. And, you know, this is tough stuff. He probably had to do the same thing, interviewing people on Zoom and everything on the phone. So I understand the difficulties. So he sends this email to a colleague. I would like you soon to reach out to, the name's redacted, on behalf of the law department to thank her for her interest in the position and to inform her that we went in another direction. I feel that you have the most experience in our office handling these types of discussions after many years of breaking off relationships with your past girlfriends and flings. Did he really do that? Did he really write that? The email is entitled, Let Her Down Easy Playboy. I mean, what are you doing? What are you doing, folks? Please, think before. And you're saying, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. I get that it's a public record. Why do you have it? I have it because evidently this email was sent while a colleague was conducting a deposition virtually, and the thing just popped onto the screen in the middle of the virtual.
Oops.
Cannot make it up. Even if you want to give him the benefit of the doubt for just trying to be funny, just trying to lighten the mood, you know, forget, you just can't, you just can't do that. So please, understand that everything's a public record. Don't conduct business that way. Work in public as much as you can and you'll be fine. Again, mindful of the time and the fact that you have lots of other things to do. Does anybody have any questions, anything you wanted to ask? Yes, sir?
I actually have a quick question. A couple of years ago, oh, maybe more than a couple, maybe six or seven years ago, I was on a different board. And I take notes during the meetings about what's being said, and we had a member of the public, I took notes. And a reporter came up to me after the meeting and said, I want what you had written down. And I didn't want to give it to him, and I didn't. And he said, whatever you write or text or email that has to do with what's being done during the meeting is F O I-able. So like, what I just wrote, what I write, is that, can someone ask for that?
Again, falls under the general definition of a public record, but one of those exemptions is for personal notes. So I would argue that, no, I mean, they can ask for it, but those are your personal notes. The only time that the notes become sort of subject to FOI is if they become part of the permanent file. If you're taking notes and it becomes like a foundation for a report or something like that, it goes into the file. But your own personal notes, you know, the notes that I used to take when I was sitting at a board meeting, I would, no.
And if someone wanted to, if someone wanted to try to get them, would they have to, since you're taking those notes as a member of the agency, would they have to put that FOI request in through the agency?
They would make a request to you probably through a central office. And the response would be, you know, thanks for your request, but respectfully, we decline because we believe it falls under, it's 1-210B1 is the exemption for notes. And if they really wanted to push it, they could file a complaint. I didn't mention that, by the way. When people think that they've been denied the access that this law gives them, they file a complaint with the FOI Commission. And if you're on solid ground, you go up and you defend, look, they're my personal notes. I'm not going to give them up.
Okay, thank you.
What else? Any other questions, issues?
Tom, just a really quick technical question. You said to go into executive session, you needed a two-third vote. Is it two-thirds of members present or?
Present, those present and voting, that's correct.
And Tom, with that, when we do invite people into executive session, we note it on the minutes who we've invited in.
Very good idea, yeah.
But does that have to be on the agenda ahead of time that we plan on?
Not necessarily, no. No, it does not. I mean, because people may show up who you didn't know were going to be there. Yeah, so you could certainly, I could say in the minutes was a very good place to note that.
Okay. We usually do, but.
Another thing to think about, I bet you do this too, is when you come out, when you go in and when you come out, to sort of indicate how long the executive session lasts. And again, for historical perspective, that's probably a good idea.
Any other questions for Tom?
I brought some of these. I call these the Freedom of Information American Express cards. Don't leave home without it. They're little highlights, very small print, but we're a very small agency. I'll leave some of them over here, maybe with you. And take them. They're great for a wallet, purse, desk drawer.
Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Always helpful to get those reminders and to be cautious of what we do. Although I think we have a very good track record of doing everything the right way. Okay, we shall move on to old business. Number A, policy second review with a vote anticipated. Number one refers to policy 1120, public participation in board of education meetings. Number two is policy 9320, bylaws of the board. These go together, so I think it makes sense to have the conversation about the two of them. And I'm going to start off with something that I picked up on as well, which is if you look at, if you have a policy 1120 in front of you, the last sentence of the second paragraph, that was brought up by our speaker at public participation. 1120 talks about public participation at board of education meetings. First paragraph, second paragraph, talking about public participations. The last sentence of that second paragraph reads, once the board moves into the regular agenda, the public may participate as allowed by the chairperson and with the following restrictions. In our existing policy, there's one through seven. In our proposed, there's one through eight. And when I read that last sentence of the second paragraph, light bulb in my head went off, and I thought this was referring to after public participation ends and we're moving into the regular agenda, then people from the public may participate as we commonly do. We commonly refer to elected officials, board of finance, town council members have been here. We've asked them questions, and obviously, we need, you know, staff opinions at every single meeting. So that, you know, we're constantly asking them for their input. So as I looked at this, I think that last sentence refers to once public participation is over and we've moved on with our agenda, our regular agenda, that these are now the seven or eight parameters where the public may participate. So I don't know if I'm not reading that wrong or different, but if I'm reading that right, it changes our whole conversation because we've been discussing one through seven or one through eight as the limitations on public participation during public participation. So I just wanted to see what your feelings are on that, and I'll start with Shannon.
The intention is for it to be a discussion amongst the board members as to how do we want to handle public participation, for the public participation part of the meeting. So I can absolutely see and agree with how that one sentence makes it completely ambiguous. And in the spirit of wanting to move forward with getting a consensus amongst the board members for what we want to do, is it reasonable for me to make a motion to strike, right here, to strike that sentence, if there's a second, and then a discussion will either pass or not pass? But just to, is it possible to make a motion to strike that sentence so that it does, so that there's no ambiguity and that this applies to public participation section of the meeting?
You can certainly make any motion, obviously. I think then if we strike that sentence, then are we now saying that one through eight as proposed in our packet then applies to public participation, and then we have that discussion? Or we do have a vote anticipated on the agenda, but if I call for a motion and nobody makes a motion, nothing gets approved and it could go fully back to the committee for review at some point.
The name of it is public participation at board of ed meetings. I, I'll make a motion. I just want the consensus of the board, you know, we're all one person. Whatever the consensus of the board is, is what it should be. But I'll make a motion to, because I believe that that last sentence of the second paragraph pauses ambiguity, and that's what we're trying to eliminate.
You want to see what everybody else thinks first?
Yeah, so, I mean, we can, oh, before I make the motion? Yeah, it's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Christine or Jerry? I mean, you're on the committee. Jerry, go ahead.
Well, you know, now, I, I had a feeling until I heard everything when I sat here and when Tom said something. I feel if, and I agree with Shannon, I'd like to strike that too, but here's my fear. If we strike that, are we striking one through eight? Did I hear Tom the right way or the wrong way? The way this is written, right, the once the board moves into regular, one through eight apply. If we strike that, then are we striking one through eight? I don't know.
That wouldn't be my motion. My motion would be to just strike that one sentence and then have one through eight discussed.
I think on this, that's okay. I think on this one sheet of paper, are we talking about, does one through eight apply when members of the public are speaking? Like when Steve came up here today and he's speaking, these refer to that three minutes? Or does one through eight talk about after public participation is complete and we are asking for participation from the people here in our audience? That's the, to me, that sentence separates that.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm afraid if we get related sentence, then what do we do with one through eight? See, that's, I.
Then where does that apply? Correct. So that's why we really need to discuss it. Nick, go ahead.
I want to skip Christine. She was.
Oh, you could go. It's all right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess my concern with the language as written is what does regular agenda mean? So is public, I mean, to me, the regular agenda is the whole agenda. Regular here means that, does that imply there's a non-regular portion, right? So to me, that would, once the board moves into the regular agenda, I would argue that the entire, from call to order to adjournment, we are in a regular agenda. That these eight things with that word regular do apply to people who come up here and speak.
And it could be. That's what I'm saying. There's different interpretations of this, this language. The question is, where do we want to go with it?
So like regular agenda moving.
Back to policy committee, yeah.
That's what I think.
I agree.
It should go back to policy committee, just to kind of clarify before, but that's just my opinion.
No, I think you're right off, though.
I think if we want to do that, then, you know, it's on our agenda. I call for a motion, nobody makes a motion. It goes back to policy.
But I think they need some, to take out the ambiguity. Are you talking about the public speaking part? Are you talking about the published agenda? So that's the ambiguity you have to take out when you're in committee. You guys got it?
Yep.
Yeah, and I think that's two separate things, right? What rules do we want to put on members of the public when they come up here for their three minutes? And we limit it to 20 versus do we want to have rules on if we're asking questions of our members once public participation is done? And I think the way we handle the latter is perfect. I don't want to restrict that. We get a lot of very valuable information from the people that are here. So, Nick, go ahead.
I think I, you can make, I can make a motion to refer it back.
We don't even have to, right? You just go.
You can do that, or if there's no motions, it stays the way it is.
I would just do that, and then we're back. Because our next meeting's the 22nd.
Next meeting.
Whatever the next, yeah, whatever, two weeks from now.
The 21st is your next. But there's no urgency with this.
No.
You know, so.
Right, so we could go in.
I know you have a lot on your plate.
The point is to clarify and eliminate ambiguity because it was in two separate, it was in two separate policies. So that's sort of ironic, but.
Yeah, and I think, you know, Shannon, as I've said in the past, the cleanup language, I think we're all good with. Right? Where the cleanup language in 9320 refers to 1120, I think there's, that's no issue. I think the issue is when we start putting rules on, you know, what people are going to say, what they can't say, what they, you know, what they can talk about, agenda, non-agenda, all that. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I could see how in one through eight, like, we had a policy that was written about what you were saying before about like recognizing people in the audience after public participation. And then there was a revision where it got put together. Because why would individual comments usually be up to three minutes in length be there if we're asking a principal about something, after three minutes, you're going to say, stop talking about your.
Right, we wouldn't do that.
Right. So it looks like one through eight maybe had a little bit of that, and then we just revised over it.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yep, so it gets to send it back to policy.
Yeah.
And we'll.
We can make a motion to send it back to policy, or if there's no motion, our current policy stays. And it would be up to you, Shannon, to just put it back on policy committee agenda at some point.
We'll just put it in.
What about, before we do that, what about the other, yeah, number, is that one separate from the number three, the rest of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's separate.
So that one's done. Next.
Those two kind of blend together, so I figured we'd have that conversation, so.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to refer to policy committee. I'll make a motion to refer 1120 back to policy committee.
And 1120 and 9320?
9320.
Okay, so Nick is making a motion to put policies 1120 and 9320 back to policy committee for revisions. Is there a second? Jeff, seconds? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, next policies that are up is the number three. A, B, C, and D, the policies on nondiscrimination, magnet schools, recruitment and selection, and bullying. Shannon, as I understand this, this is getting all of our policies in line with the protected class language. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Any discussion on these? At all? No? Dennis, here.
Well, can we make a motion to approve all four, since all four change the same language?
Yes, okay. So Dennis makes a motion to accept those four policies as presented. Nick, seconds. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Around the room, unanimous? Thank you very much. Okay, moving to new business, discussion and approval of Jockey Hollow Recognition Night and Massey High School graduation. I know a lot of people are looking forward to us setting these dates, so. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, state statue a couple of years ago allowed us to move up when we could determine when the graduation date was made. So it used to be we had to wait until the first meeting in, I'm sorry, in April. Now, we could do it at the beginning of the year. I think it makes sense to wait until, we're kind of out of the clear, although you don't know what March can do to us at times. Some, actually, positive things happened during COVID, actually. And one of them, I think, was the movement of the Jockey Hollow Ceremony to the Massey Stadium Field. For one, it allowed us to stop having to, you know, put families in the unenviable position of saying, which aunt and uncle do I really like, or which grandparent gives me more money at my birthday and can come to my graduation? So, you know, now, when we had it outside on the stadium field, we didn't have to limit how many kids could come to the graduation. So that was really nice. It took a lot of pressure off the schools. We'd like to do the same thing that we did last year with both the Massey and the Jockey Hollow graduations, and that was to have two dates for each of them with a rain date. So what I'm proposing is that we move the Jockey Hollow Ceremony to Monday, June 13th, outside with a rain date of the 14th. And then if it rains on the, if it happens to rain on both those days, then we go inside. Kids get tickets anyway. It's three or four. Kids get tickets anyway, it's three or four tickets per, per graduate. So Monday, the thirteenth for the ceremony, with a rain date of the fourteenth, and if, like I said, if it rains both days, then it's inside at Massey. And then likewise, for the high school graduation on June, Wednesday, June fifteenth, with a rain date of June sixteenth.
Any questions or further discussion on that? Nick?
And the last day of school is the seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And then the, the new state statute said that you could, if you go more than a hundred, a hundred and eighty days, you can set the graduation date, really in the beginning of the year, provided it's no sooner than the hundred and eightieth day. So we could set it, we could have set it earlier in the year, but I think it's safer to wait. I mean, we had six weather-related days off, so. But now, this would be, set it, forget it.